Come on, get with it ladies.
Five fifty-nine.
Close enough.
Close enough.
Welcome to the Carlisle Local Regular School Board Meeting. We're starting. September twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen at six P. M. Mr. Bassler, we call the roll.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Here.
Mr. Dunkman?
Here.
Mr. Jewell?
Present.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Right, thank you. Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we are going to move to our student and program recognition.
Thank you, Mrs. Lainhart. My, Kim Perkins, our Director of Special Education, for the presentation.
Thank you very much, board members and audience. We appreciate your time. We have Rebecca Smith and Rebecca Brodman. If you want to come forward, they're going to explain transition. They are representatives from the Carlisle Transition Team. And then like to share with you what transition is and why we're doing it and how they developed this plan. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Brodman. This is Rebecca Smith. And we're two of the intervention specialists at the high school. And we work with students with disabilities and we manage their IEPs. And part of that IEP is transition planning. And what transition planning focuses on is planning for students with their continuing education, finding and maintaining competitive employment and independent living. And we need to make sure that these goals are realistic and appropriate and something that students want to do. The I- oh, I'm sorry. The DLT team was created because all of the districts in Ohio are in the process of developing a mapping plan or they've already started that implementation. The members of this team were the middle school and high school intervention specialists, the Director of Special Education last year, Susan Klein, and Amanda Pennet, the transition coordinator, and the state support team. Okay, so the whole process starts in seventh grade with conversations between the student and then their intervention specialists. These will happen during their study skills class and then during IEP meetings. At that point, they'll start to determine the post-secondary pathway that the student would be on. So there's five options: two-year college, four-year college, employment, career technical school, or military. So once those conversations start happening, the students will start participating in activities that they'll do from year to year. And if you look at the binder, you'll see where the tabs are for each grade level. If you just flip to that tab, you'll see the checklist for each grade level. We focused on career awareness and self-determination because we felt that those are the two most applicable for our students at this time. So if you look at the activities that are on each checklist, the idea is that they'll build off of each other and they'll continue from year to year. So the intervention specialists will save them and then send them to their intervention specialist the next year so you can continue to have those conversations at IEP meetings with the IEP team. It's just to ensure that it's realistic and applicable for that student.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions at this point? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing.
At this time, we will move to our student. Sorry, I forgot about the technology. At this time, we will have an update on our technology.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'd like to give a brief overview of technology projects in the district over the past year. This past year, we had our second year of online testing, which went very smoothly. Teachers and students really seem to prefer online over the old paper version. It's gone very well so far. Also, this past year, Mr. Hook spearheaded an update to the district website. That also went very well. At the high school, we added additional computers and redesigned the layout of the media center. We also put phone handsets on every teacher desk in the district and also built a new server for food service this past year. One of my favorite projects was adding a new online help desk system for technology and for maintenance. And that's worked out very well. That allows us to be more efficient in tracking requests and help desk tickets, that sort of thing. Our infrastructure upgrades have allowed us to continue adding mobile carts in the buildings. And this year, we put in five additional mobile carts, including the second cart at the elementary school. So we now have a total of twenty-two mobile carts in the district. And each one of those have thirty laptops in them, so significant number now going online. The network's grown exponentially over the last few years, from three hundred ninety devices in two thousand twelve to nearly twelve hundred devices in two thousand eighteen this year. So to expand to three times the size is pretty amazing growth. This summer, we also updated the PCs in five Windows computer labs in addition to those five new mobile carts. And then finally, we've also begun phasing in Windows ten into computer labs. And we'll begin rolling that out also to teachers this year as well. Any questions?
How far along are you as far as percentage-wise, going from seven to ten?
I would say probably only about ten percent right now, but we've got plenty of time to do that. We've got like a year and a half.
What was it down?
Before they cut off support. Yeah, it's January of two thousand twenty when they cut off.
I think it was like May of nineteen at one time, so I just wondered.
Yeah, they keep extending that. People love Windows seven, so they continue to extend that. But security updates stop January of two thousand twenty, so we've got plenty of time to do that.
Online testing, that's the state mandated testing or that's?
Right, it's the state testing, the air testing. It's gone very well so far.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will move to visitors' comments. If anyone wants to come to the podium, we may come one at a time. You will have three minutes to speak. We will not go any longer than thirty minutes. And you must state your name, address, and what you're here for. You still have to speak separately.
Do I have to state our address? Is that what you said?
Yes, name, address, and the reason that you're speaking. Yes, please.
Well, hi, I'm Alexis Brewer. I live at three twenty Gladys Avenue, Carlisle, Ohio. So I am here because we have concerns about bullying in Carlisle. We have started a Facebook page called Be the Light. It's the focus on finding ways to manage bullying. It's a public page for others to talk and another, like, for people to talk to each other on it. We were wondering if we could like hand out flyers to the high school and middle schoolers to, if the kids are like getting bullied and would like help and stuff. So our long-term plan is we would like to work with you guys, the school, to start an anti-bullying program that that would like, you guys could hire a bullying prevention specialist, counselor. There is a training for the career bullying counselors that we have now that would help improve our schools and give the counselors the tools that we need to manage the bullying situations. We understand that bullying is, will be an ongoing issue. But if we work as a team with the school, with the parents, the community, we could put a big dent into bullying. Kids should feel safe at school. We would like to come after Christmas break with some ideas about an anti-bullying program and also see what you guys, like, the school district has come up with and also make this a stronger program.
My name's Reba Palmer. I live on three eighteen Dale Avenue. And when we started thinking about this program, we went through a couple policies that Carlisle, the school district is supposed to follow about bullying and the incidents and how they're supposed to handle it. And we would like to see if the school district has changed any policies to maybe help manage bullying better. Or we also found that a semi-annual report is supposed to be put up on the district website and everybody is able to see it. I was just wondering how easily that's accessible to the public, the community, the students, the parents, that way that we are all informed instead of just, you know, being in the dark about it. And that there is supposed to be a discipline plan put in place for a student found guilty of being a bully, whether that happened in a school classroom, on the way to school, on the way out of school, a school-sponsored program, and online, even online. There's something that's supposed to be done. And out of going through Carlisle and having it happen to me personally and seeing something not be done, I just want to see if there's anything that's being done now because of the circumstances that has happened earlier this month. I mean, I'm pretty sure you guys are all updated on that. I just want to see if there's something more that was done instead of it just kind of being like, oh, it happened and then nothing was ever changed. I just wanted, I want to see a change because I never saw it when I was here. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come and speak?
Catherine Back, three twenty Gladys Avenue, Carlisle, Ohio. Do you guys have any answers for them at all?
What we recommend is, is using the chain of command, like every other community member or, you know, has. So if you're, now, you said with your time here, so you graduated? Did you, did? Both of you have graduated, okay. Because the protocol is, is that you, if you're in school, then you start with the principal and talk to them.
So you have a process on this? You actually have like?
Yes, we do. We do have a process.
You have it written out, how that goes?
So, since you are, yes, we do.
And where would we find that at?
We follow the chain of command. I'm going to tell you what it is now. So since you are adults, you know, since you have graduated, you would need to make an appointment to see our superintendent, Mr. Hook.
Okay.
And that's where you start if you're, if you're an adult. Now, if you're a student, you would start with the principal of your building. Or, I mean, you could even talk to one of the counselors that we have, but I would recommend the chain of command. So, and if?
And is this laid out anywhere on the Carlisle website?
It is, yes. It's posted, yes.
Where exactly? Is it posted?
Board of Education's side, board policies, administrative guidelines.
Okay, so that's where we would get, they would get their answers to. And then after they build what they want to do as a program or to talk to you guys, we make an appointment with you, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. You guys have a great night.
You too.
If anybody else doesn't want to speak, you guys are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or you may be dismissed, either one, so. Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Thanks.
Nobody ever wants to stay for my session?
They don't. Okay, we won't talk many days. All right, at this time, we will move to our treasurer's report. Mr. Bassler.
Thank you, Mrs. Lainhart. I have a few things to give update on. First is an audit update. As you remember, each year, we have a cash audit and then a gap conversion audit. The auditors have been in and completed the cash audit. We have a couple small things to work through right now, but no real surprises or anything. So that part is done, so it's nice to have them off-site again, not asking questions like a barrage of questions, is what it seems like. But they will be back in December, once my conversion audit is complete. And hopefully, the entire audit will be complete in January, just like every other year, January, beginning of February. So that's kind of where we are. Second thing is I sent a text out earlier about the OSBA Fall Regional Conference. I'll send out another text tomorrow morning, if I can get a yes or no from everybody about going. That is Thursday, October the eleventh. It's five, begins at five-thirty and it's at the Miami Valley CTC. But I'll, I'll take care of that with you guys with the text tomorrow and get an answer. And then the third thing I wanted to bring up was I have been in talks with MOM, which is Modern Office Methods, about purchasing printers for us right now to, we have a maintenance program with our printers. And when we went into the maintenance program, half could go on a program because they were in a position that they could be on the network and about half of them could not be on there because we didn't have any drops and we weren't wireless at the time. Nor did we have the type of printers that could actually be wireless printers. So what I want to do is I want to purchase about thirty new printers. And these will replace thirty old printers that we have here. And then for sure, these printers will move with us to the new building. They're a little bit more durable. Actually, adding thirty computers onto my maintenance program is a cost for the equipment, but actually reduces my monthly cost for the, for the program. So I have thirty on now. By adding thirty, it actually dropped sixty dollars a month because these printers are very, they're durable, they're sturdy, and they don't break down very often. So the cost for them. I wanted to bring that up to you right now because I want to go ahead with the program. And then I'll probably have you vote on it next board meeting because it's going to be in a neighborhood of forty-two thousand dollars or something like that to purchase the equipment. So if anybody has any concerns about that, you can let me know. But what I want to do is go ahead with it because I have a special pricing that'll be gone before the end of October. So it's something I need to act on now, so. And I don't have the entire program together yet to bring to you, to have the votes on. This meeting was kind of a tweener. So I just wanted to bring it up and make sure you're okay with it so I can go ahead, but I'll have an actual vote for you since we're talking about a forty thousand dollar item, which we do have the money for. I'll have on the next board agenda.
So this is a purchase instead of a lease?
Correct.
Okay. Right.
If I do, it's actually a one-year lease, it's twelve months. But to what we're doing for this year, it's basically a one-year deal and will be paid off in this year. I'd like to go ahead and pay it off because I didn't want to have a lease. I'm trying not to have any leases, open leases, going into the new building. I wanted this to be taken care of and be behind us prior to moving in the new facility.
Okay.
Are these, like, in classrooms or are they?
Some are in classrooms, some are pod printers.
Okay.
We have printers all throughout the district. We might have one printer for three teachers somewhere in a classroom. It might be a printer in a special education facility because they needs privacy when they're printing IEPs. Eight of them are color printers, so they'll replace the color printers that we have throughout the district. And they're going to have a much lower cost per, per page cost than the printers that we're having out there right now. Some of our printers in use right now, we got two thousand.
Oh, wow.
So we've gotten eighteen years of use out of them, which is good. And this is actually a Canon product that we're getting. Canon has made the HPs. And they've had a split. HPs have gone with a different inside. It was really a Canon printer with an HP outside. And they bought Samsung, so Samsung is going to be making their inside. So Canon said, okay, I'm going to steal your market share. So they're offering really cheap prices on their printers right now, and that's what I'm trying to capture. Okay, so with that, I will move on to my actual voting items. First off, I need approval for our minutes from our last regular meeting, which was August twenty-seventh.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. McIntosh. Second line, Mr. Moore. You may call the roll.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lainhart?
Abstain.
Okay, secondly, is a financial report as part of your packet. Just getting started, no surprises. Got some heavy bills right now, but that's expected because of the startup to the school year, so I really don't have a whole lot on the financial report, just regular business.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jewell. Any questions? You may call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
And Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Next, I need to create what's called an O-three-four fund account. It's the Classroom Facilities Maintenance. This is an account that goes with our new construction. If you remember, back in the springtime, we passed a resolution to take a portion of our PI fund and put it in the Classroom Facilities Maintenance. Whenever you build new facilities, you have to have a half mil maintenance fund. That was not included when we passed ours because we decided to take our two mil PI and take a half a mil out of there to go into this O-three-four account. I need to get, get that O-three-four account now on the books, so I need to have it created to be able to start recording money into that account and taking it out of the permanent improvement account.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Jewell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dunkman. Any questions? You may call the roll.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
And then finally, part of your packet was our permanent appropriations for this year, as you know. In the June meeting, I bring temporary appropriations to get the year started. By September thirtieth, we need to have permanent appropriations in place, which was part of your packet, which lays out everything except the O-three-four account, which I just created. I'll have something else for you to vote on it the next time. But if there's no questions, I just need approval on the permanent appropriations.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. McIntosh. Any questions? You may call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes, thank you. Motion carried.
That is my report for the month. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good news on the audit, too. That's always, that's always nice.
Anytime they're gone.
Just don't feed them well.
Try to make sure the air conditioning doesn't work in the room with your hand while you're hearing all this.
All right, at this time, we will move to the superintendent's report. Mr. Hook.
Thank you, Mrs. Lainhart. I'll try to keep this brief, try to keep my voice intact. Construction update last, a week ago Monday. We spent four hours in a zoning committee meeting. Never been in one that long, ever. But it went well, got pre-approvals. So we didn't have to have everything approved at one point, so it'll come in phases. The big thing we wanted was the early site package so we could start doing the pad and the water rerouting and doing all that work that has to be done. So that got approved. Likely, we're going to see, well, weather's got a shape up, but we should be seeing some fences start to go up shortly. That was a big meeting, so even though it was long, it was worth it. It was worth it. So I think you're still seeing a lot of action. I think our road is, our access road has already made the bend parking lot. Haven't, haven't checked for a couple of days, so how far around that's going. But that should, that should be done pretty quickly if we get a little break in the weather here. The seating in the outfield is, is great for that. Get great germination outfield. Fencing is in, so we should be good with that, so. It's moving along pretty quickly, so I think once you see that pad go in, things go fast. With that, I'll move into my action items. Item B-one-A, I need approval for the classified termination listed below.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Jewell. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, you may call the roll.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Item two A, I need approval for the classified resignation listed below.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. McIntosh. You may call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Well, I don't know about this one, but didn't even want to put this one on. But I need approval for the resignation of Denise as an instructional aide. Item B-two-B.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. McIntosh. All right, you may call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
And Mr. Jewell?
Abstain.
All right, thank you. Motion carried.
Item B-three, I need approval for the classified employment of those listed in A and B.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. McIntosh. Second by Mr. Jewell. You may call the roll.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Item B-four, I need approval for the supplemental resignations of A and B.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Moore. I'll make the second. You may call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes, thank you. Motion carried.
And item B-five, need approval for the supplemental employment for items A through F.
I'll say we'll get used to pulling one of those out in the future because one is married to a board member, so I'm sure she will be abstaining.
Oh.
We'll get, we'll get used to pulling that one out individually next year at this time. But not this time.
If we bring him back next year.
If, if, yes.
Hey, I might be able to persuade you one way or the other, right? Just kidding.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Jewell. Is there a second?
Second.
Moore, sorry, I lost my place. You may call the roll.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
And Mrs. McIntosh?
Abstain.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, we will move to Board of Education comments. Do we have a legislative report?
The one thing I'd like to bring to your attention is that there's a bill looking at sexual misconduct, doing background checks more in-depth, making sure that, you know, those sorts of things are seriously addressed for educators, anybody who's going to be coming into the building as far as employment and things of that nature. So the state's relooking some of those things in light of recent Ohio and national instances and things of that nature. So I think that's, I think that's a step in the right direction.
Right, thank you. The CTC met on September eleventh. The CTC met on September 11th, 2018, at 7:00 PM. Do we have any old business? Any new business?
I'd like to just remind everybody to slow down when you're going through the school zone, because I've seen people flying through here during morning hours while I'm going to work, and it's a little dangerous. Seen a couple police officers out here recently that tend to slow people down, but we obviously can't get them out there every day, so. Just be remembered or mindful that there's kids in school, and some kids walk across the street.
Thank you. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? This is by Mr. Jewell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Moore. You may call the roll.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Duckman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes, thank you.
Time is 6:30.